Evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the regular scheduled meeting with the Cordova Recreation Park District Board of Directors on this Wednesday, January 18th, 2023, at 6:30 PM.
Yes, thank you. To lead us this evening in the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to welcome to the podium Denise Foss, PGA's or Class A Professional Instructor at the Cordova Golf Course.
Good evening. You're good, Sam? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands under God, in the legal, the first hand.
And I'd like to welcome our Recreation Superintendent Chase Mitchell out of this day of new words.
Good evening, Chair Yearwood and members of the board. Tonight, I'd like to introduce you to Denise Foss. Denise is a Class A member of the Professional Golfers Association of America for 34 years and one of our current youth and adult golf instructors at the Cordova Golf Course. Denise grew up in Georgia and then moved to California, and she attended faculty for she played college ball before joining the PGA of America in 1989. She's worked in the golf industry for 39 years and worked at a variety of positions, including as an instructor at Houston Camel's Country Club, the PPA Hope, various other golf courses throughout California. Denise began teaching at Cordova Golf Course over a year ago, and she's been integrating, creating new golf programming, and currently serves as the lead instructor for both the Junior Girls Golf Clinic and the Operation 36 program. In her free time, Denise enjoys golfing, quilting, traveling to Hawaii, and other places as well. And we're thrilled to have Denise chose to bring her talent and ball to experience to our community and the Cordova Golf Course. Thank you.
Dr. Mattis.
Here.
Director Langen.
Here.
Secretary Sloan.
Present.
Vice Chair Danzel.
Here.
And Chair Yearwood.
Here. All right, let's move on to B, comments by the public on non-agenda items.
Thank you. Members of the public may address the board on district topics not listed on agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. It's a violation of state law for the board to discuss or take action on non-agenda items. Board members may only briefly ask clarifying questions or refer the matter to staff. And at this time, I do not have any requests.
All right, let's move on to items C, consent calendar.
Thank you. In secular, our items are considered administratively routine and will be acted upon in one motion unless separate action on a specific item is necessary. The chairperson will consider any requests for discussion on the items prior to approval of the consent calendar. This evening, we have five items for your consideration. And Chair Yearwood, I would like to pull item C1 for a separate vote and request abstentions from Directors Langen and Mattis on the approval of those minutes, please.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion about items C2 through C5? Anybody care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. But I think we have to do the C1 domain.
We'll definitely do that after that.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
All right, the second?
Second. So you have to make a motion.
Oh, because you have to say state of the game.
Say which one?
And he called for C2.
Oh, he didn't? All right, so motion by Director Mattis, I'm sorry, who made the second? Vice Chair Danzel, second. We'll call who?
Director Mattis.
Aye.
Director Langen.
Aye.
Secretary Sloan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel.
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood.
Aye.
All right, item C1.
Chair Yearwood, I'd like to make a motion on my current item C1 of the consent calendar. I figured that door.
All right, motion by Vice Chair Danzel, second by Secretary Sloan, we'll call who?
Director Mattis.
Abstain.
Director Langen.
Abstain.
Secretary Sloan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel.
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to item D, presentation.
Thank you. Item D1 is a presentation by staff on the 2022 year review.
Good evening, Chair Yearwood, board members. Do this here.
All right, so tonight, we'll bring the video, just to let everybody know, this is an item that we started a few years back. It shows appreciation and acknowledgement of what occurred during the year, our projects, programs, events, staff, stakeholders, and community. It's presented in January for the previous year and has been done in multiple formats. You've seen this come in the form of poems, and pictures, PowerPoints, video, and even a detention letter last year. Tonight is a three-minute highlight video of our favorite events that occurred in 2022. And before I push play, I want to extend credit to our Community Relations Coordinator, Patrick Owen, for assisting and putting it together. Now, here we go. Not quite yet. Hold on.
I hope I came across. There it is. Yeah, I was gonna ask that question. Without the side, yeah, without that sidebar. That was only because we were shamed. It's a three-minute video, so we can keep it short, so if you want to do social media posts as well, it would be something advertising for a social media platform as well.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you. All right. All right, so let's see, we'll move on to E, summary reports, we have none. F, public hearings, no one, no numbers. G, regular counter items, none, so we'll move on to H, Board of Director items.
Thank you. Item H1A is to nominate and make appointments to board committees for the 2023 term. If the board desires to activate standing committees for the 2023 term, staff recommends that the chairperson make nominations and the full board vote on committees through separate actions. Traditionally, committee appointments occur at the first regular meeting following the election of board officers. Director Yearwood was elected chairperson at the December 21st board meeting. In October of 2022, the board policies were amended to allow the chairperson to establish ad hoc committees as deemed necessary and to appoint members directly without majority vote of the board. Under the analysis, we have a complete list of our standing committees. There are six the board may choose to activate. All meetings of the standing committees conform to the Roth and Brown Act and have agenda posted. Under fiscal impact, board members are compensated $100 per meeting up to six per month. Thank you. I'll turn it over to Chair Yearwood.
Well, thank you. All right, so I tend to nominate some books for five of the six that were listed here. I'm not going to activate the capital improvement part construction committee. So I guess we will just kind of go down the list, if you guys are ready. So I would like to nominate myself, Chair Yearwood, and Vice Chair Danzel for the Budget and Finance Standing Committee for the 2023 term. Would anybody care to second that? Second? Motion by, I want to say Chair, myself, Chair Yearwood, and second by Vice Chair Danzel. We'll call who?
Director Mattis.
Aye.
Director Langen.
Aye.
Secretary Sloan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel.
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood.
Aye.
All right, next one, I would like to nominate Secretary Sloan and Director Langen for the District Policy Standing Committee for the 2023 term. Will they care to second that?
Second.
Yes. Motion by myself, Chair Yearwood, second by Vice Chair Danzel, we'll call who?
Director Mattis.
Aye.
Director Langen.
Aye.
Secretary Sloan. Vice Chair Danzel.
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood.
Aye.
All right, I'd also like to, let's see, I'd like to nominate, or am I out of here? PMRD, I'd like to nominate Vice Chair Danzel and Director Mattis for the PMRD oversight nominee standing committee for the 2023 term. Second. I'm sorry, second that. Oh, thank you. You sound just like, all right. So, making sure we're looking down that way. Motion by myself, by Chair Yearwood, second by Director Langen. We'll call who?
Director Mattis.
Aye.
Director Langen.
Aye.
Secretary Sloan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel.
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood.
Aye. All right, not listed here, but I am going to put forth some names for the school district two-by-two. I would like to nominate Secretary Sloan and myself, Chair Yearwood, for the school two-by-two committee. Second?
Second.
All right, motion by Director, Chair Yearwood, second by Vice Chair Danzel, we'll call who?
Director Mattis.
Aye.
Director Langen.
Aye.
Secretary Sloan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel.
Aye.
Chair Yearwood.
Aye.
And the last one I would like to put forth names for is a school city two-by-two. And for that one, nominate myself, Chair Yearwood, and Vice Chair Danzel for the city two-by-two. Second? Second? All right, motion by Secretary, Chair Yearwood, and seconded by Director Langen, we'll call who?
Director Mattis.
Aye.
Director Langen.
Aye.
Secretary Sloan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel.
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood.
Aye.
All right, so does that mean we move on to B, HB?
Thank you. Item H1B is to nominate members of the Board of Directors to serve on the Sacramento Laffco Special District Advisory Committee, SDAC, Office A and/or Office B, and adopt Resolution 22/23-34, supporting the nominations. The Special District Advisory Committee is comprised of 17 members from various types of special districts that provide vital input to Laffco. Committee meetings are held quarterly on the fifth Tuesday or as needed. The Cordova Recreation Park District has consistently had board representation on the Special District Advisory Committee, most recently Director Lineback served in Office A, and Director Reyes served in Office B. As directors consider their interests, it may be helpful to note that Office A is only a one-year term. There are currently three vacant seats for Office A, the one-year term, and there are seven seats vacant in Office B, which is the full two-year term. The board's nominees will be required to submit a resume to myself no later than February 13th. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there anybody interested?
The A and B, explain again, one is every quarterly on the fifth Tuesday. They're both all at the same time. So if we have A and B represented, then would they be on the same meeting?
Correct.
And is it, are they Zoom or are they in person?
Currently, they're Zoom, but there will be discussion at the first meeting of the year about going back to in-person.
Where is that normally? I was out a while back at, at the budget.
I don't have the address for their meetings yet.
When I was on a different meeting at the county office.
All the way downtown.
When I was on it, we met at the or super manager's chamber room outside of their, their chambers. Um, I think the longest meeting, and this is many years ago that I served, but meetings, I think the longest meeting I served there was 90 minutes. It's, it's not a long meeting. There's a lot of different agencies that are there. The reason I joined is I was new to the board, and I wanted to figure out what was going on. So you're meeting with Water District Community, with Cemetery District Community, with all these special districts, and Fire Districts, everything, just to try and figure out what's going on and who, who needs every piece of the pie and get your voice out there. So my personal recommendation, I think both of you would, would benefit in an A and B. You, the two of you, fight over who gets what. That's my, my opinion.
I, I, I'm gonna piggyback on that too, I think that's, because I did it, and it opened my eyes up. It's kind of, kind of like CSDA, where you learn a lot of, all the special districts that are out there, and a lot of people needing assistance, not just the park district. One thing I did find out is that most of the, you're listening to a lot of the people talking, and it's not really related to class.
But it does special.
Yes, right, but it's, it's a good eye opening, but so I totally think that you guys would be great though, so I'm really.
If we do just submit our, our resume to you, that's it.
Daniel, you agree with me?
Yeah.
The fifth Tuesday, every three months?
It's roughly about, basically, quarter, so.
Right now, Zoom.
And typically, what, and my, what, three-year term there, I think I say that's one meeting in, one meeting a year, so it was down to basically.
Yeah, they usually, the last one of the year.
Yeah.
Okay, and then
seven, seven PM is that when they usually are in person? Right now, we don't know. Okay, that's what Mr. Jones is saying. Okay, right now, they're Zoom, they're gonna talk on their probably first Zoom meeting about going back to in-person, but.
And the thing is that, if we have two representatives, you say both, right? It's not, it's not guaranteed you're voting. At least if we get two people on ballot, we get one person in there, then we have at least someone reporting back to us indirectly.
Yeah. No, I'm definitely interested.
All right, so how do you guys want to?
Do it to one stage.
Was it one year, was it two?
Two years, yes, basically after the one, you have to look.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll do. I'll, I'll agree.
So I remember Board of Directors nominated Director Langen to serve on Sacramento Laffco Special District, District Advisory Committee, SDAC, Office A for one year, unpaid term ending December 31st, 2023. Apply for it. Apply for it. And nominate Director Mattis for SDAC Office B for a two-year unpaid term ending December 31st, 2024.
I'll say on that. Motion by Vice Chair Danzel, second by Secretary Sloan, we'll call who?
Director.
You were going to.
Director Mattis.
Aye.
Director Langen.
Aye.
Secretary Sloan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel.
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood.
Aye. Good luck, gentlemen. Another election.
All right.
It's just another election, just get your name out there.
So we guess we move on to H2, Board Member Reporting and Comments.
Yes, thank you very much. Item H2A is the section regarding training, and we had one over the last period, which was the CRPD Board Member Orientation on January 5th, and that is Directors Langen, Mattis, and Secretary Sloan.
I was just gonna say, yeah, it was very informative. Glad I got to go to that, so to attend that, so there was a lot of information that was thrown out there, so it was, it was good. And to realize that there was, I didn't realize that these small park districts with the residents of, you know, 2,500 people, and they had to split up to, and I didn't know this was statewide, that they had to split up to five districts?
Well, they, they, no, they're, they're debating whether that's gonna take a better time.
Okay.
They're saying, why would you do that? I would have 260 people in my district, you know, by the way.
Yeah, and then there was, there was gentleman that was there for 30 years in that position, so it was pretty incredible. Because I mean, that was, that, that kind of explained to me, because I remember, we were driving to Disneyland when that hurricane went through LA this past summer, and we had to get off on five, because Google was telling us, and so we drove through those areas there, and I drove by a couple beautiful baseball parks and everything else, but there was nobody out there, and I was wondering, how's this funding? And so that's probably one of these small districts with small population, and so, okay.
Are you laying any comments?
Yeah, I wasn't able to attend to be a Zoom, and so it was just really cool to see just all the different park boards that were represented, and also just, just to learn more. I do plan on, in the next couple of months, to watch it again, because I know I was trying to take notes and stuff, but then as that would go, then I would forget what was saying in the moment, so just being able to, to watch it again and be able to do that is very helpful, so.
Secretary Sloan?
So, I, I actually, after the, after it was over, I called back and talked to Matt in the, what is his name? He's the head of the, the executive director of CRPD, and he was hosting it, and a lot of that stuff too, like you were gonna get with your ethics training and your Brown Act training, and so I, I, when we, at the very end, we're, I really wanted to hear more from new directors about questions they might have. So I hope you guys are able to attend the CRPD conference, because there we have, it's, it's a really forum, gathering of directors and administrative personnel, and all the parks focused, and we have roundtables, and a lot of other stuff will come up too, that you'll learn a lot from. But I thought, I thought it was helpful, it was, it was, it went a little bit long because he said he was hoping to have questions and answers at the end, and we really didn't have much time. It'd be, it's always helpful to, to be there and see what's, who else are there. It's a lot of people, I don't know how many people we have in the CRPD, maybe, I don't know a lot, if you, up and down the state, so these are all, you're, you're getting the, the vision of the whole state of Jones.
Thank you. All right, I guess we move on to H2B.
Thank you. Item H2B is the Community Activities Report and Comments for Board Members.
All right, excellent. All right, well, we usually start at the end of the dais, and Director Mattis, I know you don't have anything listed, did you want to comment on anything?
I was gonna say, I went to the Polar Bear Plunge. That was fun to watch, you guys there. Take a plunge, and that's, I knew that. I was too mad that the, I know it was stormy and windy, but I thought, you know, it'd be great if, I don't know if they do it. It'd be nice to see one person go at a time, just to let me kind of see the costume and everything else, because everybody kind of jumped in all at once because of the, the weather, which held up, which was, you know, it was nice. But I think everybody had a good time. I know my kids enjoyed it, so, especially, he liked his breakfast burrito, so it was, it was a good, good, good fun event. Most of there, it would be, oh yeah, then the rest of it was just the regular HR training too. Oh, and then there's also, this Saturday, I'm gonna hit up my, because I'm on my HOA board for Ingle River, my village, but the main one is putting on a quarterly event on Saturday at the park, so gonna go there, meet some folks, and introduce myself there too as well.
Director Langen?
So I attended the Rosemont Community Association meeting, where I have attended the last a few months, excluding December. And so just hearing about what's going on in the community is always great. The one thing that I really liked that they brought up was the, the Peace Pole Project. They'll be done at the Rosemont Community Park, specifically in the Butterfly Garden area. And so I, I'm excited it's happening. It sounds like a cool little pool that, that is into the ground, and then people can come around and sign it, right, encouraging things on it, and so that's just a cool thing to see, especially at Rosemont, at that big park. Next, I went to the Swearing Inn for County Supervisor Pat Hu, and as I'm sure we all know here, Pat has some very big shoes to fill. But it was also really cool to see former County Supervisor Donna Tolle Swearing. That was pretty awesome. And then just listening to Pat talk about, you know, Donna Tolle and, and everything there. And then the last one, the Polar Bear Plunge. Yes, that was pretty fun. Mark, we did miss you, but it was great seeing you outside the pool. No, you were wearing your underwear, right? It's a, it was a great fundraiser, fundraiser put on by CRPF. It was a lot of fun, but I will say that I did do swim in high school as part of our high school swim team, and that pool was a little bit colder than me remembering jumping in, in, you know, in the mornings at like 5:45 AM for morning practice, but it was also not as cold as Lake Tahoe and G. So I do have this weird thing where I like to jump in all places, but it was fun, I enjoyed it. It was, I, it was cool to see everyone there. The funds that were raised was awesome, and so, yeah, looking forward to more of those fundraisers.
All right, Secretary Sloan?
On January 7th, I attended the Supervisor Donna Tolle Retirement Celebration, and we all know that did, GM, in a building that he used to work at. But I didn't have a chance to end up on a tour, but I, maybe someday. But it was very well attended, it was asking two lots, but the first one, people stayed over. the first one, people stayed over to the second one. And there was a lot of people. And um actually the second one, uh Mayor Steinberg Sacramento came and, and spoke. And um but it was nice. It's like I, I don't know if you know, my wife is, Donna Tolle is the Chief of Staff and now she's also Pat Hughes' chief. So that's, we're thankful for that. And I think Pat's gonna do a great job. And looking forward to uh working with Pat. But um, Don is, you know, is a great guy. It's uh and the next week I attended on January twelfth Cyrus At Heart's Retirement Celebration. Don also came and gave him a resolution. He got a couple of resolutions. And that was a, a nice event too, very nice that one was um in the event center over here on Upper Coloma. It's, it was, it's pretty, very nice.
Is that one a raw vehicle?
Yes, exactly. A vehicle. And it was a, a, a feast of great food that day. Um, um today, uh earlier in the day, uh Director Danzel and I attended this C A R P D Board Member Board meeting. And um, give you a little update on the uh, the conference, which is coming up uh May seventeenth to the twentieth, depending on your calendar. It's in Yosemite. A very nice hotel there. And I'm, I'm hearing, today I heard that a new uh, a keynote speaker uh open up the wilderness to us somehow and have something planned. I hope uh not just you're on your own, go hike and meditate underneath the falls. Don't go for good now. But um, that's a, that'll be, that'll be a, it has a great event and I hope you guys it's really, I need to really aware of what's going on. And as you know, we have a uh the governor's budget came up with a twenty two billion dollar deficit, which I get references. It's less than last time. Well, I guess that optimistic, but it's still gonna have some you know, really people close of, have the what they're gonna be cutting. And hopefully it's nothing that's directed at the park. Keeping an eye on that. Let's see. A, a little Capri update, but I thought was kind of nice is that we, you know, we've had all this horrible weather and we've had fallen trees and we've had mudslides in the state of California, all these things that happened. And instead of uh just having to file separate claims for each one, they're gonna do a, they're gonna do a block on a date kind of a block. And so if we lost about a hundred trees or fifty trees or ten trees in a different park, we can call, put under one claim. So we won't pay one to die. Did you already hear that? Yeah, yeah. But that's good. That's, that helps us out here. Um, I'm sorry I didn't make the Polar Plugs, but maybe uh maybe next year. I've got a pool and I clean it and I go out there and I just put my hand in that skimmer box. I'm freezing, you know, so my limbs go fall off. And I don't know about jumping in.
Secretary Sloan, be very careful about making ones.
Well, I know, you all hear it all year. Jim. Well, we'll see. I, I like taking photographs. And I was gonna cover my camera and, but I didn't wanna I'm taking photographs with the camera before in the rain. And I have, I have to have a tarp over me and I'm so old and and um, right, but that's.
Vice Chair Danz?
I know I've got nothing listed, but um Polar Plunge, I made every one that we've had. Um, for some reason I keep doing them. I don't know if you know why, but I keep doing them. I've got T shirts from year one, you grew stickers from year eight, nine, whatever this happens to be. So um, I'm glad there's no sausage. I'm just having to say I'm glad there was some sausage. And I did like doing it at Hagan. Um, except for that pool of being twelve foot versus being seven foot. It doesn't allow me to bounce off the bottom and get out quicker. And a little, a little colder this year. Um, at, at the far end by the, that award's twelve feet. Um, I did spend some time during the breaks and the storms just to drive around my, my, my portion of the district and look at some of the downed trees and see what was there. Um, looking at some of the areas and seeing same things. There was definitely some devastation. Some big trees went down at Hagan. Um, half of redwood trees went down and, you know, in the grove at Hagan. Allstrom lost some things. So it was, it was devastating, but I'm glad for the most part, everything is, you know, okay. I know the district, the Hagan lost some power for a couple of days. Uh, gave me a couple of days off work, which was nice. Um, I, I lost power on that Saturday, got it back Monday morning right before I woke up to go, go to work, went to work one day. Then Tuesday, Wednesday, we didn't, Heardley bicycle was closed because they had no power because, and which meant that just the Hagan had no power. But that was uh gave me chances to drive around the, the properties and look at some of the things that were going on. And then as Secretary Sloan said, uh did attend C A R P D Board meeting today. Al- always, always good to hear what's going on in other parts of the district. Um, conferences coming up. I volunteered today to be a co-moderator on the Board Member uh Roundtable. Um, there, myself and uh President-elect Doug Nichols will be the moderators for that. Trying to shore that up because a lot of times that um meeting turns into one person hijacks it and it becomes an hour and a half of their problems. And that's all we hear about and nobody else gets a chance to speak. So myself and the President-elect Nichols were gonna sit down and try and figure out the best way to give that so everybody's got a chance to to put out their, their concerns. Other than that, I know. What's that?
Roundtable.
The Roundtable at the uh conference in Yosemite this year. So uh my, I sit as the Secretary for C A R P D. So I sit on that Board of Directors. Um, as Secretary Sloan also sits on there as an at-large member right now. And I've been there a couple of years now. So as a, as a board member.
Oh, so it won't be a Zoom, so you can just turn off your microphone. It'll be in. Alright, alright. Uh, well, I uh, as promised, attended Polar Bear Plunge. That was on Saturday, January fourteen, twenty twenty three. I wise, I was very wise. I went to the shallow end of the pool. Cause this mask would have sunk to the bottom. What were you wearing? What was I wearing? It was a uh, it was a swimsuit that was around, would have been around the time of the original pool. No, it's not true. Yeah, exactly. Yes. Out on the boardwalk in Jersey. That's what I. So, hey, as I told our general manager, we said, hey, we're all wearing our tuxedo shirts, et cetera. No. I found something special for this day. So uh, yes, so promised me, promised kept. So I actually didn't think it was that cold. I didn't, but maybe down at the other end, it's, I was older down at that event. You guys just wanted to go on a good day. I, yeah, I, it was. Yes, they were buried. You weren't. They were buried to the end. And you will jump at night at thirty.
She was like the last, the two minutes and then half a second later. It's like thirty seconds and the cameraman's yelling us now, now, now. So.
You couldn't tell them on TV it was. Alright, so I saved that into one thing for the month. We'll support it. Alright, so that uh wraps up that section. Now we're gonna move on to I comments by staff on the agenda.
Thank you. Item I one is the district required monthly karting report for January and I'll turn it over to General Manager Larkin.
Thank you, Clark Jones. Uh, some highlights from the past month. Um, as noted, we took the fences down per the wind at Fetterville Park. Uh, we still are waiting for three benches to arrive for that location. The original order came in, unfortunately, the uh benches were uh damaged, broken. So we had to send them back and we're anticipating their arrival uh with new uh broken benches on the twenty seventh of January, hopefully. And as soon as we get them and they're uh inspected and safe and good to go, we will install and give you an inspection. And then we'll schedule our celebration with the community out there. It will be considered complete after the inspection. So that's exciting. Um, we have also followed up with the city of Rancho Cordova staff, their consultant L P A, as well as Rancho Cordova P D. Uh, at the last meeting, we uh said that we would walk the Allstrom site to determine whether or not it's appropriate to uh, see if there's a junior's field that we can add to that existing location. Uh, so we did walk it and uh coincidentally enough, the wind knocked down those two trees that were in the location that we're considering. So we may have saved some money there coincidentally enough. But uh, it was deemed uh appropriate through the site walk that we could uh look to see if they could offer us a conceptual design, uh what it would look like, uh considering some of the safety issues uh that P D was there for to point out some uh areas of hiding spots and things like that. So it's critical for them to be there with us for the walk through. We appreciated that. Uh, there will be also included in the conceptual design, uh some playground, upgraded playground, as well as pathways, some lighting, uh possibly plumbing and or an area for security cameras. Um, as well as um the possibility of uh some lights on the ball field as a possibility. And uh also addressing the parking issue that has been uh of note in the past. So we should be uh looking to get that conceptual design back from L P A, their consultant in the city staff. Uh, by February, I believe, late February is where we were aiming for them to give us that conceptual uh look at what they're, what they're potentially looking at. From there, uh we will look to uh create a, and lead a community outreach meeting so that the community can have a a say in what this new proposal looks like. Um, and we will lead that. And from there, uh we will kind of go through like we did the last time with the last conceptual design uh for the original plan where we just rotated the field around. Uh, and we'll just do it as that model we did before. So uh the board will have many opportunities to have a say in uh that uh plan. And thank you to uh Director Mattis suggested that we maybe time it out, uh the community engagement meeting closer to when the opening day of Little League is, so we can hear the Little League voice as well uh in that kind of way. So timing that out would be important to uh make sure that we have that voice heard in the community outreach efforts that we're gonna be having. Uh, so also, uh just wanted to point out that the, also there were some uh list that was created from the Ranch of Cordova Little League. They wanted to get some projects done before opening day. Uh, the city staff had uh given us the list as well as the school district. And it was decided that the city uh staff will take the lead on that. And we're resourcing them with our contracts that we use in our park systems. And they will uh look to use those resources to get those projects done. So they'll be taking the lead on that. Uh, as to the most efficient way of getting it done. So instead of being third party, going back with both agencies, they decided it would be best and most effective to do it that way. I wanted to give a shout out to our friend Liz Bellas from the county of Sacramento. She is the Director of Parks and Recreation for the county. They were doing a lot of tree removals along the American River. And on this side, we have a very large tree down on our dog park. And so she called me up and she said, I'm gonna do you a favor. Would you like us to remove the tree as we're removing these along the American River? I said, well, okay. Uh, so she saved us a good chunk of money by having uh that tree removed from their uh group that they're doing. It's free. And so they have a, a nonprofit group that is uh providing that service. And so I was thankful for her to offer that uh service. So they'll be taking care of that. They've given us their uh certificate of insurance to come onto the property in case something happens. Uh, we are covered. Uh, we also um are in the process currently of negotiating an M O U with also Cordova Unified School District uh for the use of Cordova Community Pool. Uh, we typically every year go back to the staff and negotiate uh an agreement for use for the pool. And this year, uh we have started with uh going off of what the fees were for last year to start. And we are working with them to reduce those fees uh by doing a shared maintenance uh contract. So more to come on that, but I believe we're hoping to wrap up uh by the end of the month. Uh, the kids need to get in the pool for swim team in February. And so we are working hard to make sure that the agreement is uh fair and also meeting the needs of the swimmers and the uh swim team program that they have at the school. So uh we're wrapping that up soon. We have had a couple of cell tower companies approach us. Uh, the most recent one was A T and T and they are interested in Prospect Hill Park. And we walked them, Matt and I walked them, what, Monday? This week? Yeah, Monday. And uh they are determining whether or not they're wanting to move forward after our site walk. So uh if you see that coming forward uh to the board, it will be in the proposal phase coming to the board. Where they're saying, hey, we're interested in Prospect Hill Park. This is the location we're proposing. This is the type of cell tower that we're proposing. And the board would be given the opportunity to decide to allow them to move on to the next phase, which would be them doing a community outreach meeting uh to determine whether the cell tower would be a feasible project for that particular park. So uh they may or may not come forward, but the process has started. Uh, we have also one in queue. Uh, we had one at the last meeting and then we also have someone interested in a Hair Landing Park. Uh, having the, a cell tower installed at, at that location as well. Uh, they haven't activated as much as the first two, but I'm anticipating most likely within the next couple weeks, they'll come forward uh with their uh need for a site visit and, and seeing if it's an appropriate location for their proposal.
Just prospect for that one that, that had the real tall side.
Yes.
Well, could they put the tower on top of that?
No. Uh, they could potentially offer, and we were very conscious of the, the ask. We were uh very much moving them forward with the proposal being a monopole, a very streamlined approach with the light on it. Uh, versus those fake trees that stand out like a sore thumb, even though they try to camouflage them, it really never works. So uh they're most likely, if they're going to propose at all, come forward with a proposal similar to that kind of a, a way of look and feel of it. Uh, we also the uh annual Form seven hundred filing is out. Thank you, uh Director Mattis and Langdon for jumping right on there and giving that file with the county. We appreciate that. I believe that also applies to existing board members and certain staff, because we have to do that on an annual. So the deadline for that is people first. Uh, so if you haven't already, check your email. It should have come from the county. If you have not, let us know and you should be filing electronically like we have for the last several years.
I forget, is that, is that, we're reporting from last year?
Correct.
So why would they be reporting?
They have to do it onboarding as new directors. So, yeah. So you're entering office and you have to file. And then when you leave office, you have to file. But if you're an ongoing, then you are on an annual uh requirement, which expires April first.
We want to know.
So then we have to file twice. Yeah, because you're new to the board. So, but if you were on the rotation like these guys, they will get a filing date by April first. So next year you'll be lucky. You'll have an extra amount of time.
It was funny because they got it on the first day on Monday, then Tuesday, then it was like, well, this is your second notice.
They need business. Yeah. So thank you for doing that. But that, it's important for us to be in compliance with all that good stuff. So um, alright, so we have uh now appointed some members for committees. So thank you, Chair Yearwood. The uh first committee meeting, standing committee will need to happen in late February, and that is the District Policies Committee. And we are needing to have that committee activated uh quickly because there are some laws that change over the new year. Uh, starting January first, and we want to make sure that our policies reflect laws uh that are changing as well as any updates that we have uh for the board to consider uh for policy changes. So uh those two committee members are Sloan and Langdon. So we will be reaching out to you guys to schedule that. Uh, so appreciate it. Uh, we also, as you know, have several uh trees down, a lot of debris from these past uh relentless storms. Uh, thank you for your patience. These large trees that are down, you can't actually get to them because we would cause more damage by getting the trucks out onto the turf. And possibly damaging the irrigation as well. So we're gonna let it dry out a bit. And then once we're able to dry it out, uh, or once it stops raining, uh we will get to those trees as we can. In the meantime, they're caution taped around. Uh, and we have filed a claim with Capri to cover those expenses, so that's great. Uh, we also, in the city of Rancho Cordova, have several development projects, as you can see from the monthly report. There's some unique projects that have come forward in review that we have, we've seen in the past. And those are related to apartment projects uh, where we still do get a percentage uh, allocation for parks. Uh, but those are some kind of newer reviews that Laura has uh, worked seamlessly with the city of Rancho Cordova staff. Uh, to make sure that we are eligible and also aware of uh, what we're entitled to through, could be like land dedication. Uh, we have a large project that has uh, come to our attention and they're in need of using Large Mont Community Park. For the American River Levy Project, also known as the American River Common Features Project. So the US Army Corps of Engineers will be using uh, the Large Mont Community Park for a staging area while they fix the levy in that area. Now, we haven't gotten an update after this last storm cycle. And so we're assuming that they're still on schedule for completion of twenty twenty-four, but we don't have a start date yet. After these storms, if there are levy damages, that might not be as a priority anymore. So we wanna make sure that we um, are in good contact with them as to knowing when and where they will be starting that. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to our Director of Parks and Recreation, Jill Loons.
Well, good evening and happy new year. So obviously the Parks Department is just a little busy right now. So before the Pineapple Express came through. Parks was busy just, you know, doing their normal maintenance, picking up um, obviously a lot of leaves now, a whole bunch more leaves. But maybe no leaves, because they probably all blew away. But at Veterans Park, we went ahead and had Crusader, uh, Crusader friends just restretch the chain link there. That happens uh, so often. And, you know, any one of our sites that we just need to go ahead and, and re-stretch the chain link. It looks really fantastic. If you haven't had a chance to go to Veterans. And then over at Lincoln Village Community uh, Pool, just in time, we put a new roof. On the uh, outdoor restroom that's within the pool um, complex there. Um, one title blew off in the big wind, but um, it was great timing by the Parks Department. And then since then, of course, all the storms rolled through. And, and as General Manager Mark had already mentioned, uh, we had a lot of trees go down. So uh, we lost thirty-three trees so far in our park system throughout all of the parks. And we lost twenty-one trees at the golf course. Yeah, so pretty big impact um, throughout, throughout our system. Um, like uh, you know, Patrick mentioned, we will have Davy Tree who is very busy right now. Um, but they will be out and they will um, help us, you know, take down and remove all of those trees our park staff can only do so much. So if you see big branches, if they're high, um, or if they're big, those big trees, we're unable to do that. We just don't have the resources. All the little branches, you know, and, and, and those kinds of um. Uh, trees we, we are able to remove and, and as you see, as you go around to the parks, we've started that process and that's gonna take some time. It's definitely gonna take some time for us as well as for, for Davy Tree. Good news, um, the golf course is scheduled to reopen tomorrow after basically being shut down for the months uh, so far. Um, it will be extremely wet, but we're excited um, to be able to open the golf course and. And we'll just let our golfers know to be patient, just like every golf course right now. Um, that, you know, the conditions aren't gonna be, you know, favorable, but um. It's gonna be safe for them to be out there. There will be some trees still down on the golf course, but they'll just use them as obstacles, you know. Hopefully they hit a straight shot.
Joe, were, were those the trees old established trees or were there some of the new small, smaller trees?
No, no, the smaller trees for the most part made it. It is, it was the bigger established trees. Um, basically the root systems, you know, are just, they're, they've, they've been looking for water for so long, so the root systems are really shallow. And so then when the ground was moist and then here comes that wind, it just not.
Most, most of them were the same type of tree?
A lot of redwoods went down.
Redwoods?
Yeah, Jim, I mean, there's redwoods and oaks. Oh, stonepines.
They were over to oaks. And at Hagan with a lot of stonepines.
And then Darryl, what, the golf course?
Yeah, um, a bunch of big eucalyptus trees, a few billows, like, you know, the big heavy ones. Those are the ones that mostly went out. And a few small ones.
So.
There were some active golfers, I think, that are.
Yeah, you know, and then we'll work on, on, you know, um, replacing some of those trees. Um, at the golf course, we're, we're going to um, you know, be methodical and, and figure out what we're gonna do with our irrigation system first. Before we just plant a whole bunch of trees at the golf course, because we want the trees to live. And if they're not getting water, then obviously they can't live, hence the reason why some of them went down. And in the park system, you know, we have a really great relationship with um, the Tree Foundation. And so every year, we, we do a whole bunch of planting with the tree, the Sack Tree Foundation, so we'll continue to do that. Um, and try to, you know, best that we can replace especially some of those really large trees. Some of those trees that, you know, had shade that were providing shade and can't replace those, what we can certainly do our best. Um, to try to, you know, um, work with the foundation and, and work with. Um, maybe, you know, say San Juan, you know, bicycle district to replace, you know, those shade trees. So we'll do our best that we possibly can. But I do wanna say, and um, you know, how much. Work it's been for both our park staff and our golf staff and I'm very appreciative of the work they've done. I mean, really, since New Years, they have been out every single day cleaning up. Just debris that's just everywhere and, you know, other than the trees, we did bear pretty well with other damage, so we were very lucky. And so um, again, a big shout out to Parks and to the golf course staff, the maven staff. Um, and for everyone's patience through this and we're hoping that we get some more rain, you know, in the next couple of months, but not like we just had. And hopefully the wind doesn't come with it this time. Cause they literally started cleaning up and then, oh, there comes the second storm and it's like, well, that didn't really do us. So um, thanks again, guys. We really do appreciate it. Please let your staff know as well. Um, in recreation, obviously you can see from your report, we have several um, youth and adult programs and sports that still took place throughout the month of December. So we're excited to see that our programs are still going strong, even though December can be a month where people, you know, take vacations and holiday breaks. Over at the Neil Orchard Senior Activity Center, we still had a bunch of events and some uh, get up and go trip for the month of December, where they shut down for two weeks. Typically, the Neil Orchard Senior Activity Center closes down uh, for two weeks so that um, the seniors basically are away and, and we're at home. Or, you know, visiting with family and you don't get a lot of um, you know, members coming in to use the facility. But during that time, staff took the opportunity to make a couple of improvements um, to the center as well as do some painting and, and some. You know, floorwork and waxing on the floor, so we appreciate the staff for doing that. And then for our special event invitation, again, thank you um, to all the board members um, for coming out to the. Polar Bear Plunge. Um, it was definitely a fun, but yet cool event. And we are excited that it was at Cordova Community Pool. It was, is a really great setting for it. Um, and we're looking forward to um, you know. The next few years of building off of this year and making this event better and better each and every year. So thank you for attending and supporting uh, the Polar Bear Plunge. Over at the Neil Orchard Senior Activity Center, we have a lunar uh, New Year's celebration on Wednesday, January twenty-fifth at eleven AM. And then morning graph party on Wednesday, February twenty-second, also at eleven AM. And with that, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Joe, I have a question. Um, the golf course is just walking only right now or can you?
It's gonna be walking only for a while.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, thanks for asking.
All right, all right. So we will move on to item J, informational items.
Thank you. Item J one is our articles, correspondence and public outreach. We had one article, one press release regarding the state parks grant that we received. And two newsletters and then J two is your calendar.
All right. Well, that means you're coming, I am A, adjourned. All right. And to turn this thing to the next regular meeting of the Board of Directors of the Grove Recreation Park District, which will be on Wednesday, February fifteen, twenty twenty-three. Twenty twenty-three at six thirty PM. This call is being adjourned at seven twenty-nine.